There we go.
Awesome. Thank you. I hereby open the Planning Commission work session. Can we have a roll call, please?
Uh, Solazar is excused. Vice Chair Bergen?
Here.
Commissioner Buck?
Here.
Commissioner Thompson? Commissioner Schmuck?
Here.
Commissioner Rhodes-Dye?
Here.
And Commissioner Stouts will be coming shortly.
Thank you. My mute button is having a hard time unmuting, so apologies for that. Are there any adjustments to the agenda?
None.
Seeing none? Oh, go ahead.
None from Stouts.
Okay, thank you. Seeing none, we will move on. I would like to ask members of the audience who are joining us by phone or online, so please keep yourself on mute until you're called to provide public testimony. This meeting is a work session where the public may attend but not provide comments. Later during our regular session at 7:00 PM, there will be time for business from the audience. I'd like to call the agenda item "Natural Resource Inventories and Protection for Urban Growth Boundary Expansion Areas." Our staff, Molly Markarian, Senior Planner, will be here to present with us. Molly, the floor is all yours.
Thank you. I am going to share my screen. Oh, I need to be enabled to share my screen.
I did. I made you a co-host.
Uh, okay.
No, you didn't. Yes, I did.
Okay, now, now we're happening. Okay, so let's get this out of the way. I want to get this out of the way. It's not. Um, so I'm moving all the faces out of the way, and so if if there are any questions as I'm talking, if Sandy or Jacob could let me know, that would be helpful. Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Molly Markarian. I'm a Senior Planner with the city. I haven't been in front of the Planning Commission for a while, and I know there's some new faces. I've been a planner with the city for 15 years in various different planning-related capacities. For this project in particular, Monica Sather was the project manager from the beginning of the project in 2020, and she went on leave in November, and I took over at that point. As you all who've been on the commission a little longer may recall, LANE Council of Governments, or LCAG, has been assisting with the project, and Jacob Colister is here tonight with me. I'd also like to note that the project has been funded in part through a technical assistance grant from the Oregon Department of Land Conservation and Development, and it's possible that Patrick Wingard from DLCD may be joining us tonight as well. This project is focused on Springfield, looking at what's inside our UGB, Urban Growth Boundary Expansion Areas, to take care of what's on the ground today before moving forward with future projects, specifically identifying and protecting significant wetlands, riparian waterways, and upland wildlife habitat. With the Land Conservation and Development Missions acknowledgment of Springfield's Urban Growth Boundary Expansion in 2019, we're looking at just over 790 acres that are now Springfield's responsibility for planning. Our Urban Growth Boundary, or UGB for short, expanded in the three darker areas shown on the map. The North Gateway area in Northwest Springfield, the Mill Race area in South Springfield, and a few parks along the northeast edge of Springfield, which we are calling the Willamette Properties. The expansion set out to accommodate a needed long-term supply for employment sites and to bring key public lands into Springfield's UGB. About 270 acres are intended to make employment opportunities available to Springfield's target industries. The Springfield Utility Board, Willamette Park and Recreation District, and City of Springfield own about 2/3 of the properties within the areas we're talking about today. Over 450 acres are dedicated to public land and open space, which means we can continue making sure we meet future needs for education, recreation, and other services such as safe drinking water. I'll also note that a portion of the North Gateway area is within the floodway of the Mackenzie River, which is reserved for no development and is dedicated to natural resources. With the expanded UGB in place, the city has been doing the necessary planning to allow future development. One of the first steps is to locate and evaluate our natural resource assets, such as wetlands, riparian corridors, and wildlife habitat, and determine which resources offer significant benefits and should be locally protected so the city can determine where to direct future development. This project really exemplifies the need to balance goals that can be thought to be at odds with each other sometimes, such as conservation, while also accommodating job opportunities and public access. The bottom photo on the slide showcases how these project goals relate to and can even boost one another. As you can see, the Mill Race itself has a waterway under the bridge. The Mill Race path provides opportunities for us to enjoy recreation, and the train tracks run alongside it behind the Booth Kelly areas lumber mills. Our comprehensive plan conforms to Oregon's statewide planning goals and sets the stage for our work plan in the UGB expansion areas. Specifically, urbanization goal four tells us that as the city grows and as land develops, we need to maintain and reinforce Springfield's identity as a river-oriented community by emphasizing and strengthening physical connections between people and nature in the city's land development patterns and infrastructure design. Urbanization Policy 45 focuses on the restoration and management of the Mill Race in order to enhance public access to it. Urbanization Policies 47 and 48 require the completion of a local wetlands inventory and updates to Springfield's Natural Resources Inventory. And then Urbanization Policy 51 calls for code protections to ensure that development in employment-designated land is designed and constructed in ways that maintain aquifer recharge and protect drinking water quality and quantity. This project is also helping our Parks and Recreation District with their master planning and others who want to explore what they can do with their property by understanding where significant wetlands, riparian areas, and wildlife habitat are. As you can see on this slide, this project has involved collaboration with many public agencies, and we have the Springfield community and many other interests in the center of the diagram because we, as agencies, are here to serve them and because key project tasks rely on their knowledge. Much has been accomplished on this project since we kicked things off in early 2020. Our inventory of existing conditions and evaluation of resources has included public outreach, field investigations, and functional analysis. After several iterations, the Oregon Department of State Lands, or DSL, is conducting their final review of our wetlands and riparian area inventories and assessments. Their approval is anticipated this summer with an expectation of few, if any, changes. Our wildlife habitat assessment is also in process and anticipated for completion this summer. With these steps nearing completion, we've been moving in greater earnest to figure out how to protect the significant resources. And the next few slides will, I'll cover what we found in terms of resources. As the name implies, the LWI effort involves identifying and analyzing aquatic features in accordance with criteria outlined in the Oregon Administrative Rules, specifically identifying the location, size, quality, condition, and local significance of those features. Our environmental consultants identified 30 total wetlands in the UGB expansion areas, and 29 are considered significant. For reference, these wetlands more than double Springfield's currently adopted list of 24 locally significant wetlands throughout the rest of the city. 92% of these wetlands are on publicly-owned land, except that in the North Gateway area, 92% are on privately-owned land. Attachment two in your packet outlines what riparian, wetland, and riparian corridors are and their key functions. Wetlands are determined to be locally significant should they meet criteria, such as providing some wildlife habitat and have an intact water quality function. The full list of values considered is on the slide. Wetlands can have more than one of each function. We found that a wetlands connection to water quality was the most common reason for local significance in the UGB expansion areas. Hydrologic control and fish habitat were the next most common reasons. It makes sense that so many resources on the urban fringe would be significant given that these expansion areas brought into the UGB are largely minimally developed and/or agricultural lands. And also of note, several of Springfield's wealth fields. All documented wetlands within the North Gateway area were determined to be locally significant. Additionally, all documented wetlands within the Willamette Properties study area were determined to be locally significant. And then all but one wetland in the Mill Race study area was determined to be locally significant. Our riparian effort also involves identifying and analyzing aquatic features in accordance with criteria outlined in the Oregon Administrative Rules and Springfield's Natural Resources Study. The fieldwork was done concurrently with the wetlands fieldwork. As shown on the slide, our environmental consultants found 24 riparian reaches, 23 of which were determined to be significant, totaling approximately 10 miles. And for reference, Springfield's existing list of 20 significant riparian resources will double when these are added. Again, attachment two in your packet talks about the key functions of riparian corridors, and the functions noted on the slide help determine significance. Our environmental consultants ranked the quality of the significant corridors, and as you can see on the slide, many ranked high or exceptional quality. And the exceptional-quality reaches were spread throughout the study areas, but most are found in the Mill Race area. In the North Gateway area, we identified five riparian reaches on the Mackenzie River and the Maple Island Slough. In the Willamette Properties area, the study area, we found three riparian reaches comprised of the Kaiser Slough, Mackenzie River, Cedar Creek, and South Cedar Creek. And then in the Mill Race study area, we identified 15 reaches on Gori Creek, the Middle Fork of the Willamette River, the Mill Race, Gori Creek, and Subs Wealth Fields. Using the Safe Harbor approach under the Oregon Administrative Rules, our environmental consultants evaluated the potential for the study areas to support what are known as sensitive status species. This is not a cut-and-dry process, nor are the criteria, so we had many conversations with the Oregon Department of Land Conservation and Development and the Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife. Our environmental consultants mapped suitable habitat for 23 sensitive-status species for whom they designated the potential to occur in the study areas as occurs or likely to occur. Currently, we are working with local Oregon Department of Wildlife, Fish and Wildlife staff, and LCAG towards a final significance assessment. The local ODFW knowledge is helping to refine real habitat potential to support these sensitive-status species. We are also looking to ODFW to more clearly demarcate where the significant wildlife habitat falls outside riparian or wetland protection areas and would thus be considered upland habitat. We're now moving from the stage of inventory and assessment in the project to determining which path Springfield will pursue to protect the significant resources and interconnected with that where development is best directed. I think it's helpful to think about how we've approached resource protection elsewhere in Springfield and the existing structure we have in place as a starting point. As noted on the slide and in attachment three of your packet, the existing regulatory framework starts with the statewide structure at the top and then how Springfield has worked within that structure to date with our Stormwater Quality Management Program and our Natural Resources Study. The Natural Resources Study follows the, what's known as the standard method for protection, wherein economic, social, environmental, and energy, or EC, analysis is utilized to justify a more nuanced natural resource protection program, wherein some uses are allowed, limited, or prohibited with specific protections in place. The analysis formally lays out the justification decision to protect, partially protect, or not protect resources by looking at the consequences of not allowing, partly allowing, or fully allowing uses that may be considered incompatible with natural areas, known as conflicting uses. To date, Springfield has elected to pursue the limit conflicting uses approach through setbacks and site plan review as outlined in our Springfield Development Code. As I just mentioned, Springfield has a regulatory structure in place, including policies, a precedent of inventorying and assessments, a framework for analysis, and existing implementation provisions that the newly identified natural resources could be integrated into. That said, the state framework outlines different paths communities can take to protect newly identified significant resources. The path Springfield has elected to pursue in the past, both with the initial inventory work and also the 2011 update for Glenwood Resources, is what's known as the standard method, as you can see in the figure on the slide. Using the EC analysis has allowed Springfield to balance development priorities with natural resources protections, setting the precedent for a highly flexible dynamic. The question before us tonight is whether there are any compelling reasons to change course in Springfield's approach. Some possible considerations. One, the UGB is largely an undeveloped urban wildland interface, so we might want to take a closer look. Well, the standard approach does that. It's more qualitative. And the Safe Harbor approach is more prescriptive and not necessarily more protective of natural resources. Then we might want to think about the time and effort between now and adoption hearings. It's true that the standard approach would take more time and effort on the front end, but with the Safe Harbor approach, since we have the framework in place already through the standard, for the standard approach, we would have to create new code language. We could also consider different paths for public land versus private land versus public utility land, but again, that does not seem efficient to administer or clear for the public to understand. So as outlined in attachment three, staff recommend continuing with the standard method of protection for wetlands and riparian areas. For wildlife habitat, the standard method is required. I just wanted to note that I realized after this packet went out that there was a sentence that didn't make any sense, and so I just wanted to draw your attention to that. And I can share this slide with you as well. To ultimately meet statewide planning goals five and six, the inventory and preferred protection options will result in an update to Springfield's Natural Resources Study and possibly the Springfield Development Code. So our check-in tonight with you all and the one that we have scheduled in a few weeks with the city council will inform how we approach talking with stakeholders and developing draft content to develop or to update the Springfield Natural Resources Study and potentially the Springfield Development Code in the months ahead. And that's it. Are there any questions?
I guess I've got one.
Sorry, I'm supposed to be calling on people? Yep.
So, so a general sense of things. The study is, the, the, or the information you derived is subjective to some degree. Sounds like a large number of the identified locations are high-impact, that's the wrong word. In other words, of the places studied, most of them were very sensitive areas. Is that fair to say?
Well, I guess I would characterize it as within the three areas studied, the wetlands and riparian areas identified are of high quality.
And that's a subjective determination. Is that fair to say?
I don't, I, it's actually very objective because it's, there's specific criteria in the Oregon Administrative Rules that outline like how you, you meet that criteria.
Okay, very, very prescriptive in terms of the person that's analyzing it?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Buck?
Thank you. Molly, that was a great presentation. Thank you for, for going over that. Very well done. I, I guess I'm, I'm curious, and I know this is a little bit of a curveball, I apologize. But, you know, the, the studies definitely did a good job of looking at the Mill Race areas, the wetlands areas, and, you know, it's kind of those natural resource components. I, I wonder, as, as we're kind of on the, on the forefront of this, of the project in Glenwood, it's, it's going to really be highlighting that riverfront property and, and that, that area there. I'm wondering if, does this study look at any of, any of that area? I don't think that it does, and, but I wanted to ask that. And then I'm curious how this approach would be applied to areas such as the riverfront and those kinds of things. I mean, you know, there's a lot of, there's going to be a lot of development, a lot of construction, and, and so that, that natural area is going to change a whole lot. And I know that it's a value to try and keep it, preserve as much of the, the natural integrity there as possible. So I'm just curious if this applies at all, or if that's just kind of a whole separate thing.
So the, as part of the Glenwood refinement planning process from 2008 to 2012, we conducted a, the similar kind of project just for Glenwood. And our Natural Resources Study was updated at that time to include the wetlands and then the, the riparian areas along the Willamette River in Glenwood. And it was determined at that time to follow this standard approach in Glenwood as well. And all of the wildlife habitat that was identified in Glenwood was determined to be within wetlands and riparian areas, and so it would be covered by those protections. There are no wetlands in the area of Glenwood that's being master-planned at this time. The riparian areas along the river, however, obviously are, and there are a couple of different levels of protection. On the Willamette River, there is a 75-foot riparian setback within which development cannot occur. And then there's, the Willamette River also has the overlay of the Glenwood or the Willamette Greenway, and that provides different levels of protection also within 150 feet of top of bank. Not prevention of development within 150 feet, but different protections.
Thank you.
I actually, I, Commissioner Thompson?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Molly. Great presentation. I was running real quick at, at two questions. The first one, I was wondering if you could provide a quick, and my apologies that you explained this already, but slide 16. Let me jump to that real quick, specifically the asterisk at 18 likely to occur, and another little asterisk there. Could you maybe expand on what, what that means? ODFW tends to be as recommended, reclassification removal of six species as part of significant, significance analysis.
Sure. So, let's see. The occurs. Occurs. They were. Our our environmental consultants were able to say, you know, definitely. These sensitive species exist in the study areas. With the likely to occur. There were certain aspects of the of the habitat that led them to believe. That those species were occurring, but there weren't documented sightings. Within five miles in the last. Twenty-five years. Is that right, Jacob?
Yeah, I think that's that's getting to the essence of, I think one of the things to note here that's really important for the asterisks is the idea that. A lot of the tools that are used for species habitat identification. Are applied at. Sort of non-urban scales, and so when they're identifying habitat quite regularly, if you think about something occurring within five miles. That that has more. Habitat significance than a than a kind of larger. You know, public land setting. Wildland setting than in an urban setting, so we end up with tools that are utilized to establish habitats. That in an urban setting, a mile, a half mile, a quarter mile can make a really big difference. So we've been looking for just higher resolution. From the the experts and ODFW to kind of refine, when you say likely to occur. In a in in their. Goal five sense for urban planning, we we are really seeking higher resolution to understand what that means. So, for example, some of these species would just show up. Covering in the entire expansion areas, like there was literally no. Distinction because they occurred within five miles, so part of the likely to occur is to tease out. More detail. That becomes useful in an urban setting, like what are the critical corridors or what are the existing? And do they align with riparian wetland areas that that are already going to be protected in this process? That might have been overkill on explaining, but that's how I see the asterisks.
No, that was great, yeah, no, thank you very much. Last question, I'll I'll keep it short, I I don't want to get stuck in the weeds per se. Been studying standard method versus safe har- safe harbor method, so maybe I'll just kind of. Say what, say my understanding and maybe if I could ask clarification regarding. So so I can provide support of your recommended action in the attachment that you provided, so it sounds like standard method. If adopted will be compliant with. State by planning goal five, however, is the safe harbor method simply more restrictive and more protective of ecosystems? And and kind of what's the the main gist and and once maybe is is the safe harbor method more restrictive of development proposals?
It's, I I'll say a little bit and then maybe Jacob can add some more. I would characterize the safe harbor versus the standard as. The safe harbor route exists for communities that don't have the resources to get into a really. In-depth look at balancing economic. And natural resource interests and to put in the time and effort. To to analyze that and then have protections that reflect that. Whereas so the the safe harbor process is intended to be more streamlined and therefore is more prescriptive. Because it's faster, easier. It doesn't necessarily. Bet protect the resources better.
Yeah, I think that's that's a great characterization, that's. For example, if you wanted to. Protect safe harbor for wetlands, for example, says you will protect the weapon as defined as delineated. On the, or not delineated, but as as characterized in your LWY. If you wanted to. Provide additional protection, the standard method is the only way to do that. If you wanted to allow some kind of impacts, the standard method is the only way to do that. So it is very much, it's, I think the safe harbor is trying to to make an attempt at a nice. Baseline protection that again is streamlined at effort, it gives folks a nice predictable, defensible approach to do the protection. But the easy analysis, its benefit is is very objectively flexibility, so you have an opportunity to make a case for any sites. In one direction or another, or to take a. A certain tact and in some cases that is, in this instance, impacts seem to be a net positive and in this case. Greater protection is a net positive.
Awesome, thank you, great, great explanation, appreciate it.
Any other questions?
Oh, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, I mean, we there's, we aren't looking for a formal motion or anything like that, but yeah, you know, it would just, it would be helpful to know. I mean, I think based on your questions that that you. Would confirm that we would proceed with the standard approach, but I don't want to make that assumption, so. If if you have any thoughts, that would be helpful.
Okay, well, I'll make a motion to support the recommended action in the attached. Briefing map briefing memorandum to confirm the Springfield call of the standard approach.
Can't actually make motions and work sessions, I'm just looking for, I think, a comment, understanding, but thank you for the effort.
Yeah, cool, well, I'm headed ahead of the head of the curve there. Thanks a lot.
Molly, I thank you very much, I. I guess what I would say is based on everything you presented tonight. I I definitely would say. It it certainly suggests to support that standard approach. There's precedence for that with previous studies and previous projects. And there doesn't seem to be any evidence. To shift that now. Obviously. There could be new information later. If there, you know, and obviously that could change things, but. I would say based on everything that I've heard so far up to this point and given the historical precedents. That, yeah, there's. More than adequate support for the standard approach.
I'll just make a comment, Molly, I think it's a great work and I really appreciate knowing. What we have as far as riparian and wetlands properties, they're a very valuable thing for our cities, so. It's great work that you're doing and I. Really appreciate it, thank you. And I concur with Commissioner Buck.
I agree.
Yeah, I believe the standard method appears to be, you've done a lot of the work as you mentioned, and it seems to be an eligible extension that route.
Molly, do you have what you need?
Yes, thank you very much.
Okay, and if, are there any further comments on the presentation? From commission? Okay. Well, seeing none, I hereby adjourn the work session since there are no further questions. Sandy, do you want us to wait until seven for the regular mess? The regular meeting, or do you want to roll right into it?
That's really up to the commission, we can roll ahead or we can take a break.
Can I get a consensus on what people would like to do if you would like to roll in or just move? Take a slight break.
I'd roll in.
Let's go.
Perfect. Do we need a separate recording? Sarah, do we need a separate recording for this, or we're just going to keep going?
We can keep on going, if there's no pause, I won't stop the recording.
Perfect. Well, then I hereby open the regular meeting of the planning commission. Can we get a roll call?
There, so Chair Salazar is excused still. Vice Chair Bergen.
Here.
Commissioner Buck.
Present.
Commissioner Thompson.
Present.
Commissioner Schmunk.
Here.
Commissioner Rhodes died.
Here.
And Commissioner Stowe.
Here.
And stuff, and adjustments to the agenda, so it's up to the commission if you do.
You said it has no adjustments? Okay, any adjustments to the agenda from commission? Okay. Seeing none, I ask that you join me in the pledge of allegiance, those in attendance in person, please recite the pledge while others online are muted. I will start and then I will mute myself. I pledge a.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, without doubt, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all so much. Okay, we will move to the minutes from April eighteenth, twenty twenty-three. Are there any corrections to the minutes as published in the packet? Seeing no corrections, the minutes from April eighteenth, twenty thirteen stand as approved without corrections. We will now take business from the audience. Before I read through this, do we have anyone from the audience either in person or? On Zoom?
We have none in person. And none on Zoom.
Okay. Do I have permission to just skip that portion then?
Yes.
Thank you so much. Okay. Next item is reports of council action, are there any reports of city council meetings? I don't have the meetings dates specifically in front of me and who is in charge of them, I'm going to go off the honor system. If you have council report, please feel free to share with us.
I have one. Go ahead.
Go for it, yeah.
This is for April third council meeting work session, councillors discussed in the work session. Applicants for Ward four, they selected three candidates for the interview. Council also discussed Capitol Street bond. And staff shared a map showing streets in various condition categories and stressed the importance of maintaining streets to avoid major repairs. A council also talked about a future street bond measure and the need to consider any bond in relation to other lovies and of other agencies. The council meeting mayor recognized food waste prevention week, the stormwater team shared about the importance of protecting our groundwater. The council had held a public hearing on an ordinance to annex a property in North Street. In Springfield, this was the first reading, staffs, staff also brought a resolution. To initiate an application of an annexation of the of an annexation council approved. On a resolution number four to annex certain territory to the city. Council also approved a budget of six hundred thousand from ARPA. Funds to purchase a home in Springfield for Anne's heart. This is a direct grant for purchase or down payment, funds are not available for renovations or operations. Funds must be used by May twenty-fourth, that's April third council meeting.
Awesome, thank you so much, any other council reports?
I think I owe one, but I do not have one today.
Thank you. I'm in the midst of actually listening to April twenty-fourth. Which is where they had. Counselor Blackwell sworn in. And I'm about halfway through that one, so I will give you guys a full report at our next. Opportunity. Are there any others? Before we move on. Okay, well, thank you so much, and as a reminder, our schedule is posted in Springfield Oregon speak at the very bottom, is a link that's planning commission. Next, we have any business from the development and public works department.
There is no meeting for May sixteenth. So you'll have the rest of the month off. If you choose to take it off, my first opportunity this Thursday. To come to the comprehensive plan map project, the clarification projects are having the open house. At Thurston High School from five thirty to seven thirty. So if you have people that are interested in what you're doing, why you come to these meetings. You could bring them along and. Come to that open house, we don't expect a lot of people. But staff will be there.
Isn't it the library?
Yeah, high school library, yes. And then on June sixth, we do have a public hearing scheduled for you. And in talking with Chair Salazar and Vice Chair Bergen, we think we'll take advantage of the work session time. To go over, because we have so many new commissioners. And. A chance to talk about. How strict we want to stick to Robert's rules. And as we go through the procedures, some etiquette in terms of these hybrid meetings, just kind of checking in on how things are going. And for the commission to work through some of those finer points. And. Get you ready for a public hearing. Context that. Evening. So that's all I have for you tonight.
Thank you, and my most sincere apologies, I just skip any business from the planning commission, so we're just. We're going to circle back to that one, does any, is there any business from planning commission members? And for those that are newer to the planning commission, you might be wondering, well, what would we talk about? In the past, just as a. Sort of to tune you in, one of the things that I typically mention at the beginning of the year for business from planning commission is. The Oregon Rollers Economic Housing Summit that would directly. We can glean information as planning commissioners as to what's happening, so if you in your line of work or your volunteer roles come across something that you think the planning commission might be interested in attending. This would be the opportunity of when to share that. So that being said, any, did that spark any ideas for anyone? Not at this moment, okay. Well, perfect, if that is all the business we have, then I will adjourn the planning commission regular meeting and thank you all so much for your time and attention today. Apologies for not being on screen, but for those that know, I'm at my son's T-ball practice, so trying to multitask here. So thank you all so much and I hope you have a great. Week ahead. So we are adjourned, thank you.
All right, see, see everybody in June then.